I'd like to call this regular council meeting of June 15, 2017 to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Kuz?
Yes, here.
Zingy?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kafer?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us down to persons to be heard. First is Kay. Take your name and address if you would like, please.
Good evening. My name is Kay Andrew. I live 506 Calhoun Road in Ketchikan. Now I call the Ketchikan branch. My family is owned by the Gilmore Hotel and Hotel House. Thank you to those of you that gave me the opportunity to address the concerns of the DOT job and state job. We have several concerns with this job. One of our main concerns is that night hours vary. We own the Gilmore as I stated, and working at night is not an option for our business. Our view rooms are on the street, and we would have people cancel or leave the hotel with the noise. We would like to see you issue a variance per block or section that the crew is working on. Because actually moving down the street, there's no hotels or anything until you get around the corner where Cape Fox and the New Yorker really does. So we'd like, as I said, we'd like to see you issue some kind of a variance per block or per section for where we're not interfering with the hotels or apartments along the way. The internet is where everyone checks comments on hotels when they're looking for a place to stay in the town they are going to. And when they see a negative comment on people staying, in this case construction law rate, they will just keep looking somewhere else. This isn't a major concern to all of us that have hotels or apartments in the downtown area. It could have a long-term effect as these comments could stay on that site and well past the completion of the job. Access is a huge issue with us and will make the difference between living through this project. The road job was passed when it was devastating to our business. We have been in business 16 years, and it was the worst two months we've ever had. We lost 30% of our business in those two months. And our customers told us they didn't come because of our access to our business. All the parking was taken out, including the loading area and the handicap parking. The customers were expected to fight their way through the construction zone and get across the street. We had to fight to get our loading zone back so we could get supplies into our business. And I wanted to say that Cara Gerzak, the city's senior project engineer, helped me tremendously. She was a great help in getting us our loading zone back so we could at least get our guests into the hotel, our products into the hotel, and I want to thank her. Our employees couldn't make enough money to pay their household expenses and food costs. I was able to work with the unemployment service to help them file for health until they could get their hours back and we could get our business returned to normal. This helped them, but didn't help us pay our payroll, our lights, our water, our sewage, our garbage, and all the fixed costs that go along with our business, as well as the bank loans. Can anyone here tell us what the access to our business is going to be? It sure does not seem like anyone knows or cares how the businesses that provide year-round employment are going to survive this project. We need a reliable timeframe as when and how long this job would be in front of us on this block. Are they finishing the job in front of us before moving on down the block, or are they leaving it tore up until they get it all done? Again, what are you demanding for access to our businesses, or have you had any input in this process? We are also investigating our legal right for access for our customers who are trying to get someone to help us answer our concerns. We've been trying to work with the state. We have made several phone calls to Christopher Goins, the managing engineer for the state of Alaska, and have received no callbacks. Is this what we're going to be dealing with, with DOT that won't even answer their phone? We are only trying to survive this project and have no access to information except from you guys. If we're forced to close due to the loss of our business, what other choice besides a legal remedy do we have? If you listen to the state presentation, which I listened to the tape of your meeting as I wasn't here in town, that they made to you, they say knowingly to be concerned about tourists and the tour buses and not the local businesses and the people. This is all of our community, and my hope is the city council is willing to help make this as smooth as possible for all of us. We are very concerned for not only ourselves, but our employees, as they are part of our family too. We are dependent on you to make sure the state does this job responsibly. We are respectively requesting you to include guaranteed access to our property and no night construction in front of the hotel, so there is no question what is expected by the contract. Thank you very much for highlighting this.
Any questions?
Thank you, Kay.
Tim Lewis?
Hello, good evening. I'm here on behalf of Cape Fox for the 3338 first street. We did submit a letter to the city council earlier today. I think everybody got it, so we're here to see if there's any questions, comments we can answer. We fully agree with what Kay just represented to you guys as a whole. We don't think there's a whole lot of thought process put into this by DOT, and it will impact our business significantly. So we are requesting that... We did in the letter put some suggestions that we think are better options than what they have come up with. We know that it's not a perfect rule for anybody, but we think that there's some different hours that could operate that wouldn't harm us as bad as what they will harm us if they start construction at eight o'clock at night and then seven. Really, we're here to see if there's any questions or comments from us that we can answer on how it affects us, because it will affect us.
And you'll be here and available during the...
Yes, yes. Last meeting, we wish we would have gone after the DOT because we had a lot of questions right as you're in the presentation, so we think we answered those in the letter that we submitted, but I mean, the main one is just we're concerned about our guests. Our guests are not cruise ship passengers. They're people that come here, they go on fishing tours. I mean, they're spending three to $4,000 a night on fishing tours that they come in for a night, they leave, they go out to other villages, and that's our guests. And those people, to us, spend more money in this community than a cruise ship passenger. Example, this weekend, we had a company in, a client in, they were in town less than 16 hours and then dropped over $3,000 bills. That doesn't include what they spend at the local pubs, the gift shops. Next year, I cannot book that group without telling them, "You're not going to go to sleep." I mean, that's our fear, and morally, we cannot book them by knowing what's going to happen. So that's why we asked, is variance to be declined with, you know, other restrictions. I mean, I think there's a better time for them to be doing this work. But yes, I'm here for any other questions during the...
Thank you. Any questions?
I've got one.
Yes, go ahead.
Now, in your letter, you said due to the climate in Ketchikan, your rooms don't have air conditioning. I don't know of any hotels in Ketchikan that actually have air conditioning.
So there is one now.
Oh.
But it was just built.
Oh, okay.
And the only reason that they have it is their model of hotel puts window units in. It's not a window unit, but it's below the windows. And, you know, those systems, you can't just buy heat, so they do have air conditioning.
Right.
So there is one, but by approving this variance to us and to Cape Fox and to, you know, the New Yorker and to the Gilmore, you're taking 30 to 40% of the rooms off the market for next summer. Because morally, we can't not tell our customers that, hey, you know, not only do you have the challenge of the sunlight being out of Paul Day.
Right.
And, you know, the challenge of at 5:00 a.m., flow cleans arising out, and you're trying to get adjusted to that time zone, but now we're going to put construction that makes you just not go to sleep. And these are people spending big money. So not only affects our community, but it also affects other communities that they're flying out to the next day. I mean, we sent the group out to BMW over the weekend, but, you know, the 30 grand that they spent with us is nothing compared to what they're spending on BMW. I mean, they're over $100,000 tomorrow. So, I mean, it's a big effect. And each hotel in this town, it's not like the 48. There's not a Marriott or Hilton on every corner. So we all offer different things. You know, you can't get the heritage that we offered to Cape Fox at the landing, and you can't get the availability that the landing has with the ferry coming right off their frontage there. You can't get the home feeling that you get at the New Yorker or at the Gilmore. We're all individuals, so when somebody sits down at their computer and says, "I want to go to Alaska," and they pick the hotel they want to go to, it's based off of what they're looking for. It's not an option to go stay somewhere else. This is what they want to experience when they come here. So that's where our fight is.
Okay, and to expand on my question, I was thinking, I was just thinking, Kay said 30%, you said around 40%, and I just had a real off-the-wall question. Do your, would the people even hear it if your windows were closed? You mentioned the windows being open.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, most people stayed up there. I mean, like I said, you know, two months ago, we had construction down, right there in front of the New Yorker, and it wasn't about breaking up the concrete. It wasn't about that noise. It was about the reverse sirens on all the trucks. It was about the lights coming up the hill. I mean, those are the complaints we got. You know, we refunded over $1,000 that night. When I called the city, and I was like, are we continuing this on? Is this just a one-time thing? The response that I got from the city was, well, it's the price of updating everything. That's, you know, I can't say that to a guest, so that's where our issue is, you know. And, you know, we did deal with it that day because it was a one-day thing. This isn't a one-day, this isn't a one-night, you know, deal. This is... And to us, watching the, re-watching the video of what happened last council meeting, there's a lot of questions that they haven't answered. There's a lot of things that they tripped over in the presentation, you know. There was a comment about, you know, doing it in the rainy season or define the rainy season, you know. Pull the weather up on your app right now. It says rain for the next two weeks every day. There's no season to define. And then one of them said that the asphalt has to, you know, cure in cooler temperature or warmer temperatures. The other gentleman said that the concrete actually was the one that had to cure in warmer temperatures. It's harder to deal with. So that's, you know, we just don't think there was a whole lot of thought put forth. We don't think that there was a sound or, you know, study done what should have been done, and that's why we don't think it should be approved, you know. We think that there's viable other options that will help, and we think that if they start earlier, you know, we're willing to work with that. We don't want to see construction from 2:00 to 11:00 at night either because it affects our restaurants, but that, you know, we'll deal with that. We'll make sure that our service and our food takes away from that noise, but we can't do that when it comes to the fact that somebody's saying we don't have that option. So, you know, we are willing to compromise and say, okay, we'll deal with it during dinner hours and stuff like that, but we can't, we can't accept the fact that we're giving a little bit. So that's where we stand.
That's basically all, except that I see solutions are mentioned in the letter from the administration from Cape Fox and a lot of...
Yes.
We just get complainers, but they also mention a solution, so I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks. So that brings us down to the consent agenda, and if there's no objection, I'd like to move 7A1, which is the Centennial Building restroom expansion change order, and 7A5 is another change order in regards to home. Seeing no objections, we add the consent.
Do you want to move the appointments to boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
618.
618. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And motion for consent, do I have a second? Been moving in second. Now, first, would you read the items?
Approval of limits, regular city council meeting of June 1, 2017. One-year extension of contract number 1519 Defender Services Joseph Kovak. Budget transfers, 2012 stacking for adequate fire and emergency response Safer Grant. Budget transfer 2016 Volunteer Workforce Solutions VWS Recruitment and Retention Pilot Program Grant. Appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Williams. Change order number two, contract 1633 Centennial Building Restroom and Gallery Expansion, Dawson Construction LLC. Change order number one to contract number 1702 Hole in the Wall Floating Brick Wall Replacement Full Engineering.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Severson?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes.
Kuz?
Here, here.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kafer?
Thank you. Moves us on to unfinished business. Request for noise variance, Fountain Mills Dedent Creek Reconstruction Project, Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. This was deferred from June 1, 2017, so the motion is already on the floor. Discussion.
We have a discussion before we have a motion?
No, the motion's already on.
The motion's already on, so...
The motion is to approve the variance.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'd like it to be modified, and at the very least, I'd like it to say, I think the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The current ordinance is 10:00 p.m. to what time in the morning? 6:00 a.m.?
Yes.
6:00 a.m.
10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
You know, and there's a reason for that ordinance. When people come to Ketchikan and they want a good night's sleep, in a hotel, they want a good night's sleep. And I would be open to changing it to 11:00, but I don't see why they can't start at 2 or 3:00. It seems to me like we're catering to the cruise ship passengers and not to our own local hotel businesses. Why not start at 2 or 3:00 in the afternoon? Is it because of the cruise ship passengers? That's all I heard from Mr...
Gomez.
Boy.
From DOT at the last meeting. That's all I heard. And I don't know who's giving him that information. I mean, I just don't get it. Why would we cater to cruise ship passengers over our own local hotel businesses? Doesn't make any sense. Because we're not talking about walkways and how they're going to get there. That's going to be blocked off regardless. We're talking about noise, just the noise. Why can't they work within the boundaries of 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.? Within the boundaries of our ordinance, the way it is right now? And he's not here for us to ask. I just, I still don't understand it. I don't want to pass it as is.
Do you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment.
To modify?
Yeah, to modify the, to allow the variance up to 11:00 p.m. as it is right now. It's 10:00 p.m., so maybe up to 11:00 p.m. I know they need the warmest time of the day for convenience, though, is what I understand, for convenience reasons, and probably, it's probably less expensive that way to give them the noise variance for up to 11:00 p.m. That way, at least, our hotel owners can say, hey, this is only going on until 11:00. We've already heard they're going to lose 30 to 40% of their business if we let it go on all night. Who would want to stay in a hotel room when there's noise and they can't sleep?
It's what happens in New York City all the time.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I just think, I mean, we have to decide, do we want this project to go forward? And are there ways that some changes that could be made that could mitigate some of these problems? And these folks have all come up with some good ideas, and maybe now we need to prepare a list and give it to the state and say, we want to look at this, and what can we do to mitigate some of this stuff? I mean, I don't think it's anybody's intent to cost any of you 40, 50, whatever it is, percent of your business, but do we want this project? If we, if we don't, then we don't, but I don't think that's the case either. And we have to make sure that it can be done, and saying that they can work till just 11:00 at night, I don't think accomplishes that. But there might be some other things that, working at different times, or, you know, like I liked Kay's suggestion, that, because I notice when they do work here, and I imagine that it's more cost-effective for them to rip up the whole dang street and then do it, but, you know, there might be some ways that they could work in sections and do something like that, but, yeah, I still think we need to move forward with the project.
Yeah, I can't support this as it's stated because I'm like Judy, there's, I think there's options. I think we can, and if we'll sit down and work with the state and the contractor, I think we could avoid working at night in, say, front of Annabelle's. They go down the street here, three blocks, and stay out from in front of it at that point in time. It may affect Cape Fox a little different, but we'd have to do some... And I think they can start earlier, and we, I think we're remiss in saying we're catering to buses because I think that's wrong. We're trying to cater to everybody to keep them going, and those buses Bob and I were talking can come in from kind of some different directions and avoid some, some sections earlier in the day, and they can be worked during the day. But I still think there's going to be some need for night work, and so what I'd like to see us do is to write down a list of things we want you, the contractor and the state to consider and bring us back a plan so that we know that you're minimizing that impact, like avoiding a block at these, at these days and times and hours. And, and I think we're better off working it that way, but still knowing there may be a couple of nights they're going to get hit for whatever reason. So I won't, I won't support the motion as stated.
Get on with it.
Just from the thing we saw last meeting, it appeared that most of that work was going to be done in the winter, October.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk part, and, and what I didn't, like, I think Kay brings it up too, is that this last project, they ripped up a lot, but they were putting in piping, so they had to. If, we could also get them to say, state, okay, we're going to do this section first and this section and work through, so they're not all blocked up for the, for the whole project of this, especially the sidewalk piece, but the, yeah, I don't see why, even, even if they have to do it through the summer, it from, like, you know, cruise ships are here till a certain time, but they're usually moving out, or people are starting to get back to the boats.
With rare exceptions, there's only a handful of boats.
Yeah, and there's only one. No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
But, I mean, I think that, yeah, I don't see why we can't. I don't, I don't support it either the way it is because it just kind of blankets everything, and then we're kind of put, we don't have any say.
What's on the floor right now is to have modifications, so it's only until 11:00 at night.
Okay, so, yeah, talk of it, yeah.
So just a couple of clarifications, and it's not just about noise, and it's not just about cruise line buses, it's about traffic. And if you were downtown today and you were trying to think of doing construction during the daytime with the traffic, foot traffic and vehicle traffic downtown, this project wouldn't get done. That's pretty much a fact. But I do have concerns in regards to DOT and their lack of communications, such as Chris not calling back. I left a message for Chris today to make sure that he understood that our retailers, business owners in the community are deeply concerned about this, and it's in his best interest to call him back and have those discussions openly about your concerns. As far as the amendment, I don't think that fixes the problem or addresses the fact that there is a time schedule in regards to construction and how we manage that, but I don't think the state has also gave us enough information so that we're comfortable in the way that this would proceed in regards to some of the complaints that we have. So I'm not going to support the amendment, and then we have to go back and decide how we're going to... What we're going to do with the main motion.
I'd like, I'd actually like to withdraw the amendment. I mean, I can see it's not going to pass anyway as it is if you withdraw the second. But I just, I think there's a better way than doing the noisy work, because you talk about foot traffic and the disruption in the flow of traffic. That's going to be there. What, what Chris said, and he said to me after the meeting, is that the noisy work, the crushing of the pavement is going to happen in the middle of the night. That's why they're asking for the variance. The traffic's going to be going in different direction anyway the whole time. It's not like they can do it at night and then cover it up and have everybody smooth in traffic the next morning. It's going to be a mess for a while, but that noise variance is what they're asking for, to have the noisy stuff going on in the middle of the night. That's what I think they don't need to be doing. They don't, and I'll, like I said, I want to withdraw my amendment, but I want us to remember what we're concentrating on here is the noise. The traffic's going to be horrible anyway. It's going to be blocked. There's no way they can cover it up during the day and everything's magically fine during the day. It's going to be blocked the whole time they're working. I just don't want to see that noisy work done in the middle of the night.
To, to address that to a certain extent, the grinding of the pavement, they can grind... grinding of the pavement, they can grind it, and you can drive on it. It's, it's not going to block the street. What they do is they take the upper surface of the asphalt off, grind it down to where they can put new pavement on, and it's not a built-up operation. That's not saying they can't do that between the hours of four and, and ten, and do other works in regard to steel or something later at night. I do agree, and I asked at that one meeting if there was a way to mitigate some of the backup lawn noise in regard to construction, but there are ocean standard, OSHA standards about how you deal with those, whether you can do them with strobe lights or other things, I don't know. That's something as we move forward. So the motion has been withdrawn, and we're back to the main motion. There's a lot of questions, and I think there are concerns that we have to relate to DOT, and for me, before we pass the motion for the, the variance, I think there needs to be a deeper construction and a more detailed discussion on how it's going to impact individual businesses. Nick.
I realize this is going to hear from DOT, maybe staff can answer this. What sort of timeline are they looking? Obviously, this was obviously on our agenda two weeks ago. This was put up again, was the...
If I could take first stab at that, and maybe Mr. Hilsen can, and on further, just as it is with the easement and right-of-way that DOT is asking, they're going to need to resolve these issues almost immediately if you're going to meet that October one start date. If we're going to be in detailed discussions about how we're going to accommodate each business, I think there's a lot of risk there. It's not that we can't have those discussions with DOT, but if, if we're going into an extended dialogue and not giving them in any indication about how we're going to respond to their request for a variance, I think we're going to run the risk, and it's a council decision whether you want to extend this to a two-year project as opposed to... Mark, how, if you want to head on to that?
Uh, no, I don't. I, I think that's accurate.
So, that, that's the other side of the, the issue you got to keep in mind. It's not an ideal project from anybody's perspective, don't get me wrong. I understand completely what Kay and the others are saying. The flip side of that is if we have to try to accommodate every concern, you're probably looking at a two-year project. And just to play devil's advocate, if you were downtown today, imagine trying to accommodate that traffic and putting things down to one lane, so you're doing construction in one, you're blocking traffic while it's flowing one way, you stop that side, that's going to be a mess, and you're going to hear from a lot of two operators and other people. So, as I say, it's not ideal by any standards, but the work does need to be done.
Nick?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if we could cut them off short for, for the next meeting and have them come down here and listen to our ideas?
We can make the request.
And there's, I think there's some things they would agree to, to work with the contractor. And I know we can't delay it past that next meeting, but I, I, I think it would be beneficial to talk about, you know, doing a section at a time and, and different things that we've talked about and what these folks have talked about. And I, I have a feeling about half of it, we can come to an agreement. On the other half, there may be some night work, and I, and that's what it's going to be.
One thing I would point out, we have an extra week before our next meeting, if the council might want to entertain a special meeting, if we can get them down soon.
If they can get...
Yeah. One of the things, too, is this is a phased project, and talking to Kay and Tim, the first portion is just the sidewalk work, and it's starting in October. Not to say that that's going to be all nighttime work, because it's, we're off tour season, there's less traffic in the downtown area, and I suppose that that would move forward similar to what we did with the wheelchair ramp stuff this year. So, Tim, would you, did you have...
If I recall, they're doing that during the...
Yeah, so, the, the part we're talking about is to start up in May? Is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
It was, I thought it was also brought up that they do the breaking up of the pavement in the winter, try to get some of that done before the summer kick, before they started laying the pavement, so that that noise isn't...
I asked if they could grind earlier in the year, and I didn't get a response to that, but that's something that we can certainly talk to them about.
And, yeah, and something we can talk about. I think the other thing on the concrete work in the winter, we got to make sure that Kay and other businesses that operate on the street don't get blocked access. They, they've got to have access to those businesses, and the DOT has got to guarantee that. No options.
And again, this is a, a road project, so there, there are certain things that they're going to have to do in regards to traffic, but they're trying to minimize it for the community, and, and the traffic is the big thing anytime you're trying to do any work in the roadways. And so, when you don't allow them some latitudes, like Carl was saying, it extends the project to maybe a two-year project and, and more cost, because you're, you're going at it in a slower pace for a longer period of time, and that, that costs money. And I guess we could physically throw this thing so far out of the whack that they put it off another year, and then who knows what the funding's going to be there if they continue on. That's another concern that we should think about. So how...
Can we defer again since we've already deferred once?
Well, we don't want to just flat defer, but we've got to give some, some guidance to, to the managers so that we get a special meeting and so forth. So I don't know whether that's a deferment and to a special meeting or something like that. We just can't quote defer. And I don't know what the proper way to do it is, but, or maybe it is a deferment.
No part of the problem is we don't know exactly whether, we, we can set a, a special meeting, if they can't make it, it's, it's a waste of time.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest you defer pending a meeting with representatives of DOT or staff responding if the meeting can't take place. Deal with it at that time.
And it would basically be a public meeting so that everybody can come and express their concerns and try to get the specific answers in regards to that. Do you have enough information to relate to DOT, what the concerns may be?
If I can get copies of the letter that was submitted by Kate Fox along with Kay Andrews' letter, we can have that dialogue and get them prepared to come down and, and meet with the council and the affected business owners, and have that dialogue and see what they can do.
Yeah, and I think that, I think the whole goal is we want to work together to get the project done. We can't not let it go away, but we got to also consider the impacts on folks, and so they need to kind of...
So I'm looking for a motion to defer until such time as we meet with DOT. So move.
Second.
Comment. Call the roll, please.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Severson?
Yes.
That brings us down to item seven A two, authorizing projects for nomination under the National Infrastructure Program. Do I have a motion? There's two motions there.
There you are. I move motion one. I move the city council authorize city manager to submit federal community project request to the state of Alaska for infrastructure funding, as detailed in the staff report dated June sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Then move in seconded, Nick?
Uh, no, I think those are good projects, but I, I have a question, and that is, I noticed in there we can add a third one. How about getting rid of the rock out here in front of dock two as a project and see where it goes?
Councilmember Kuz, we gave that some consideration. The problem is we can't control the permitting. I think that's going to be, at best, a two- or three-year effort, and they want these projects shovel-ready, and they can't represent that that project's ready to go.
Try it anyway. See what they say. Maybe we can speed the feds up on the permitting if they know it's a priority project. We only got two.
Only got two, two feds.
In, in this motion, again, we're, we're looking at, you got to look down at recommendation two. If we decide to go that route in order to have the engineering done prior to this middle, it's looking like we're going to request some extra funding in order to get that expedited. So, motion one, does that carry motion two, or do we have to make a separate motion for that, do we authorize the funding?
Two.
Okay. So, is there any other comments on motion one? Are you none? Call the roll, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
That brings us down to motion two. Do we have a motion?
I'm still down, I think, so I can't...
Yeah. I move the city council authorize city manager to enter into an amendment in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand to the professional services agreement between the city and Stufel Engineering LLC for expedited design of Phase Two of the Tongass Highway Steer Force Main Rehab and Gravity Steer Replacement Project and approve a budget transfer of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand from the appropriate reserves of the wastewater fund and to the wastewater division of two thousand and seventeen Force Main Replacement and Rehab Capital Account.
Then move in seconded, Nick?
Uh, no, I think if the, we're going to do that, we're going to do it, but I, I only got one question. Where is this for to and from? What piece of the highway are we working at?
Mark Hilsen, Public Works Director. So this goes basically from just south of the tunnel, so right at Grant Street North, and ends about Jefferson. There is a little gap in there between sea level and the curve at Water Street that we did this year, so that's not being done. But basically, it's tunnel up to Jefferson.
Let's see. It needs to fit in with redoing the whole thing, doesn't it?
Okay. Well, talking about that, we've, we've been talking to DOT about doing some repaving, so the sooner we can get this done now the way, the better, so that we have a seamless surface as we move forward.
Yeah, because from third, this way, needs to be done, a lot of it needs to be redone, and that's probably next year's project, the way we were talking.
Yeah. And a, and a portion of it is under the biodeaf, and part of that is gravity.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other comments? Are you none? Call the roll, please. Thanks.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Severson?
Yes.
So that brings us to item seven A three, termination of two seventeen community agency funding agreement with Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Alaska.
Your Honor, I move the city council direct staff to take such action regarding the two thousand and seventeen unexpended appropriation of nine thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents to Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Alaska, as determined appropriate by the city council.
Sorry, then move in seconded. Judy?
Well, as I understand it, we could leave this and put it back in for two thousand and eighteen. But I was wondering if we have ever, as council members, have we considered giving any funds to the Ketchikan Community Foundation? Because I think, as I, as I understand it, down the road, they'll be part of the folks that actually provide funds to some of our nonprofits.
Yes.
I'd like to see all of our community funds go to them. They're, they're, they vet the projects, they...
Ex, I, I had a conversation about that today, so they don't, you know, everybody who applies doesn't necessarily get the money. They select which organization, so that they'll pick, I think this year it's youth.
Yeah, they, they also focus on specific ones.
On specific ones, right.
So can't give them, because otherwise they would feel...
And, and they have no interest in, I mean, they're, they're an endowment, so they're building. Because I thought the same thing, it would be great if they could, but that's not how they operate. But I think that, you know, if we're going to be doing some forward thinking, we should maybe start thinking about that, even if it's a percentage or some kind of portion. But as I think of that, I also am reminded that our homeless situation, and we're going to need to start, you know, looking at money for that. So, you know, I, I, I don't know, I'm starting to lean more towards leaving it to two thousand and eighteen and seeing what happens, but then on the other hand, I want to support the community foundation, so...
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, now, I guess the direction we're giving though is we're going to terminate that agreement, so the money's going to be there.
Right.
And I, I guess I lean away from the community foundation, I don't know why, but I do, I'd rather be, keep that money in. I think that homeless thing's going to hit us again this winter. And if the Salvation Army can use some help, that, to me, is going to buy us the most.
Right.
And that's just my thought.
No, I, I have no argument from me on that.
So, in amending that motion, does somebody want to leave it in the two eighteen, or, and go ahead, Danny?
Well, the only, so the community's grants, when they do their grants, the money goes into a, like a permit fund, so it builds interest. So they can, they can actually give funding out to different organizations, and they don't have where there's a bias because of, certain grants can only go to certain things, just like if one of the banks donates, they have to keep it within a certain regulation. So that's kind of why that community grants was built, just so that somebody who can't get a grant or funding from, like, the commu, our grants, or from the banks, could go to them, because it's a, it's a little more open. They can, they're a little more freer with the money. However, I will agree that, that the homeless issue's going to be, it's going to get bigger from whatever, so...
Nick?
Yeah, I guess at, at this point, I would rather see the money stay in the, in the budget for just what you guys are talking about. I, I don't have a problem with giving money to the community foundation, but we need to be thinking about if we wanted that, how we want to do that. I think if we do it now, kind of this way, it's the old camel's nose under the door of the thing, and suddenly, I, I guess, if, if we decide to give money to the community foundation for whatever reason, I want, I want to be a really well thought-out process, rather than just kind of, oh, we've got nine thousand dollars here.
Yeah, right.
So, and I suspect we are going to need that nine thousand for additional, you know, additional to the seventy-five thousand for the homeless stuff, so...
So can I amend it, amend it to say that we rolled that into the two thousand and eighteen community grants? Would it just stay in there?
Well, my, my concern about that is we might need it before two thousand and eighteen if we're dealing with homeless situations and there's a need this, this fall and winter, so, Carl, is there a way that we can...
It will just stay within the fund of council.
If we just pass it the way it is, without any amendments, it stays in the fund.
And then, if one access it later in the year for a specific purpose, it's there.
So we have...
It will carry over into two thousand and eighteen.
Perfect. So we have, we have a motion on the floor that deals with the, the Big Brothers and Big Sisters and, regarding to those funds, and so with that motion, it would just leave those funds for us to expand if necessary at our discretion.
We've just given direction.
Yeah.
Right.
So, any other comments? Are you none? Call the roll, please.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. Thank you. That brings us to item seven A four, funding of fire department apparatus replacement.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Then move the city council direct staff to prepare the draft two thousand and eighteen for our department operating capital budget incorporating an apparatus replacement plan utilizing, utilizing the financing, whatever they said, my machine just went cheek. Replacement, lease financing. It's got a thing over here that's just... Eric went away. Blanked me out on it.
Do I have a second?
No, I, I think one of the other was a good move, and if Bob and our chief wanted to recommend that way, I think it's worth a try. We'll look at the plan when we get it. But it looks, it sounds like it's gonna be the most cost-effective way to do stuff, and I know in my past years, we used to have what we called a working capital fund, and we fed it every year on every, on our heavy, on our equipment, and it was always something there to get it done, and leasing probably works.
Yeah, one of my hopes is that through this process, we can levelize the funding to our fire apparatuses and be able to meet the needs of our fire department better, because we can't buy in future council to replace those apparatuses, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll please?
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
So that brings us to item seven A six, approving permanent easements, the right of ways and temporary construction easements, Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, Front Mill and Stedman Street Reconstruction Project number Z six eight one six zero 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 zero. I think I got it wrong.
If not, it's busy. I move the city council approve permanent easements and rights of way and temporary construction easements for the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, Front Mill and Stedman Streets Reconstruction Project as submitted by staff, waive compensation for the permanent easements and rights of way and temporary construction easements, and authorize the city manager to execute the documents on behalf of the city council.
Is there a second?
Can you make that box bigger?
Yeah. And the original motion was replaced by lot seven A six. The correctment of the motion is the same. And the idea to donate those easements rather than charge for them. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll please?
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
That brings us down to the Ketchikan Public Utilities Section and B one, ordinance number seventeen dash eighteen fifty-three, amending chapter eleven point one two, telecommunications service rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code for free reading.
Your Honor, I move the city council approve a first reading ordinance number seventeen dash eighteen fifty-three, amending chapter eleven point twelve, telecommunications services, service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, providing for a public hearing and establishing effective date.
Second.
Then moving seconded. Carl, it's Dan here. Dan, would you kinda come up and give us a brief synopsis of what this does? For the public?
Certainly. Dan Lindgren, Assistant Manager for KPU Telecommunications. So we have some just really exciting new internet plans that we're going to be offering to our consumers. As you all know, there's just this ever-ending appetite for more Netflix, more content, more internet, more everything, so it's part of our role, is we need to keep up with that demand and what our customers' expectations are. So we've retooled all of our plans. We're really taking advantage through these new plans of our ability to offer symmetric speeds. So we've got fiber-the-home network that gives us a lot of capabilities that our competitor does not have, so we've got a better network, and we can really take advantage of that. And one of those is by offering these symmetric speeds. So that's one of the big enhancements. And then you'll, reading through this ordinance, there's a lot of other changes that we made in there. Just some of them from the technology changes as we transition our network from a copper network to a fiber network. Things like digital subscriber line go away, because those are really technologies that are on the copper network. Now we're on this, you know, fancy new fiber network, and, you know, we're just doing away with some of that old terminology. Also doing a little bit of reorganizing in there, just, just structural reorganizing things that, and just some cleanup generally. So that's why it's a fairly significant ordinance.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Dan?
Yeah. I've been trying to read this, but it's still downloading, of course. How does this, we talked at length several months ago about bandwidth issues. Does this deal with that at all, or are we still looking at trying to find extra bandwidth? When you mentioned the Netflix thing, it reminded me we had the issue that since everyone in the world was downloading large quantities, we were running out of bandwidth.
So part of, you're thinking of off-island transport. So, part of our ability to raise these speeds in this particular instance were because we just upgraded our microwave transport network down to Prince Rupert, so we have more capacity, and that's really what's allowing us to offer some, you know, bring those speeds up. That being said, it's going to be an ever-ending challenge for us to continue to get more bandwidth. So I think as we go forward in the next few budget cycles, we'll be talking about other options and other opportunities to, you know, continue to get that off-island bandwidth, because that is, you know, a challenge for us just because of our geographic isolation.
Yes.
Following up on what Dave asked, in your report further back, you talk about this additional work capacity allows us to sell off-island transport capacity, in this case via the routing traffic to Ketchikan to Canada, Seattle to a business customer. Explain that to me. Are we got somebody coming outside buying out, buying into our bandwidth, and we're gonna short our local customers, or what's, I don't understand?
So our network, we would call that the middle mile network. So obviously, the core of our infrastructure is here, right here on island. We have a couple different transport links that we call them, or middle mile links, that get us down to Seattle. In Seattle, we have some equipment down there, and then that's where we connect to the internet, we connect to Verizon, and do a lot of things at that hub down in Seattle. So we have capability to handle traffic, anything on Ketchikan to the outside world. So we will look at any revenue opportunities that we have that makes sense. If we've got the capacity, if it makes business sense for us to, you know, sell that capacity on a wholesale basis or a retail basis, just say, you know, just our retail customers here in Ketchikan, but, you know, we'll take advantage if we have the capability, you know, for any new revenue stream.
Okay, and that's not gonna affect the price to the local customer?
No, we're not shortchanging the local customers by diminishing their access to bandwidth by those type of sales.
Yeah, absolutely.
Added revenue that we can generate using the facilities and bandwidth that's available to us, but we're not shortchanging local residents.
Yeah, lower the local customers' cost.
So we operate the utility like a business, so typically, in a business environment, you're not looking to lower your revenues. If you have an opportunity to make a, enhance a customer's experience, we'd rather give them more bandwidth and keep them at the same revenue, so our revenue's not declining, because, you know, when we build a new microwave link, when we look at new facilities, all that's gonna cost money. And so, you know, we really try to keep that revenue, as much revenue as we can, and then, and then look at what other opportunities that we have to give value to the customer.
The other thing to keep in mind, Councilmember Kuz, is we are always at the mercy of the federal and state regulators in terms of the revenues that we get from, from the feds and the state. And there's always proposed reforms being talked about that diminish the pool that's available to us. So it's not a good time to be, you know, changing and lowering fees when we're at the mercy of revenue losses imposed on us.
Yeah, and I would absolutely agree with that. That's, continues to be a challenge moving forward.
Any other questions?
So, so KPU, the data systems are also in SUI, right?
So we built a Verizon LRA site in Skagway.
Skagway.
Skagway, yeah. So it's a one-sector site, and it's been operating, it's been a really good revenue enhancement. I, we, if you look at our revenue growth over the last two to three years, you'll see some pretty significant growth, and a lot of that is from the Verizon LRA roaming in part of that Skagway, and that's all good revenue that's coming from, you know, customers that are off-island customers. So it really is a good opportunity for the utility and for the city.
The reason I ask is I'm curious to know if it would be worth looking into doing it in some of the outer, first some of the outer islands, offering on the same.
So we have, in last year's budget, the city council approved the ability for us to expand to Metlekapla. To us, that was one site, one location that made a lot of sense, just because it's closed. It also, it would connect right to one of our existing sites, so you'd can, you'd expand our continuous coverage. And it's also from a transport standpoint, we can do that with our own facilities rather than having to lease that from a outside, you know, outside company. So we're, we'll look at those opportunities. We're still waiting for Verizon approval on that particular project, but, you know, we'll continue to look where opportunities are, you know, and expand, only if they make sense. I mean, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not in this just to expand, you know, expand our network only. We wanna make sure that it makes proper business sense to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none? Do we have a motion?
No, we already did.
We already did motion, would you call the roll please?
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Brings us down to item eight, vouchers, approval of vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five dollars, and All American Auto in the amount of two hundred and three dollars and eighty cents.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you a question. There was a lot laid on the table dealing with the parking, it was a post office over. Do we need to deal with that before we call?
We're gonna do that under manager's report, I believe, unless Carl wants to handle it elsewhere.
We'll do it under manager's.
Okay, so we don't need to approve anything?
No.
Okay.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five dollars, and All American Auto in the amount of two hundred and three dollars and eighty cents.
Second. Moving seconded? Call the roll?
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
So that brings us down to manager's report. Carl?
I had to screen this evening, Vice Mayor Severson. The governor signed the legislation today dealing with transportation network companies. There was a report that we gave the council regarding that item. I know there was a lot of discussion and debate when the legislature was considering the bill. There is an opt-out provision within the legislation that if there's any interest on the council's part in not allowing that type of operation within the city, we can bring forward an ordinance that ultimately will be placed before the voters as a ballot proposition. It's something that the voters would have to decide, but that's the council's call, whether you wanna take something like that to the voters. So we're just making you aware of it. If there is interest, we can prepare the ordinance, if not, we'll just move on.
What's the timeframe on when you do that?
If you're looking at the October ballot, sooner rather than later, because there's pre-clarence, isn't that right, Cam?
I think they removed that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they, you don't have to do that anymore.
But you would wanna, yeah.
Sooner as in next year, or sooner as in sometime in next month?
Probably within July.
Okay. Let's think about that, because I initially am in favor of opting out of the deal.
One other question that relates to this. Do we need to do anything to cause them to pay a sales tax? Or is it automatic?
My understanding of the legislature, the legislation, is that the individual drivers will be subject to local sales tax, so they'll have to register with the borough, and it'll be up to the borough to enforce that collection.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's been watching the news, but both Lyft and Uber are in the middle of litigation.
Yeah, they have a variety of issues, yes.
Yeah.
So we'll wait for council direction on many issues. During preparation of the two thousand and seventeen general government budget, there was a project that got biased that was not included. We really need to address Harborview Park in terms of cleaning and staining the park down by the promenade. We have a contractor lined up. There's more than sufficient money within the port fund to do that and appropriated reserves. We've got a budget of sixteen thousand five hundred, which is more than I'm authorized to transfer without council approval. I'm seeking council approval to move forward on that project tonight, and I would bring the budget transfer back for consideration at the first meeting in July at the council. Allow me to do that.
Well, at this point, we have four hands to move forward with the cleaning and staining of Harborview Park. That's the one. Okay. I see the four hands, so.
Just getting a little queue. And then the last one, I made a memorandum for the Public Works Director on the table tonight. We've been in discussions with the postal service, as everybody's aware. For the last several years, we have not had an annex office in the downtown, and the postal service is trying to remedy that situation. What they're proposing to do is bring down a van that would serve as a mobile office Mondays through Saturdays. They're looking for a space where they could place that, that would be convenient, not only to the merchants, but tourists within the downtown area. We've identified a spot in the Centennial Parking Lot near the Parnassus Bookstore. From our perspective, we think it makes sense. I have the authority to do this under the code. I don't wanna move forward without council concurrence, number one. The city attorney has recommended that we try to get a license agreement in place. We will attempt to do that, but this being the postal service, that's probably gonna take some time before we can get that accomplished. In the meantime, they'd like to get in there, maybe starting next week. We don't have any objections, but I just wanna make sure that's all right with the council and we're seeking your direction or endorsement about going ahead and moving forward on that.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I think this is a really, really good idea. And I'm only gonna ask just one question. The location, would it be any more convenient and better off if we moved it up to the corner of Auden and Dock, rather than clear down there? Is that something that you guys looked at, but I'm just curious?
I'll defer to the Public Works Director.
Yes, Public Works Director, Mark Hilson. Yes, we did look at other locations throughout that parking lot. The post office felt in terms of access and location that this was, you know, the best location when considering especially the safety in the area.
Okay. So you're looking at the four hands, Dave? You have it?
We'll move a couple of conflicts in here if I can see.
And that's all I have.
Right. Thanks, Carl. Is there any questions in regards to the manager's report? Utility report? Anything from the city clerk?
No, no.
City attorney? Any future agenda items? So Carl, after your discussion with DOT, we will have a better idea when we can call special meetings. We look forward to doing that. That brings us down to mayor and council comments. Nick? Judy?
I have none.
Dan Lee?
Nope.
I just want to thank the Ketchikan Police Department for stepping it up this Saturday. They will be involved in the shoe solstice event. It's usually the lumberjacks that are the soulmates and the, the Ketchikan Police Department will be providing soulmates for our event, which will be really nice to see them in uniform. It always brings out more money, more bidding on the villain's part, so thank you.
We get to see Joe and Thumps? We get to see Joe and Thumps or something?
Maybe so.
Nick?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to, I wanted to note as, as per the manager's report, the senior medic Seth Krasnau is retiring and he has been a major force, good for good for our department for many years and I just wanted to pass along. Hopefully he'll still be around because I miss seeing his cheerful face. Not the freshman, of course. Speaking of freshmen, though, I had the, the great joy to visit our emergency room earlier, earlier this week. I was actually the same time, as long as I mentioned, whoops, not me, someone else in my family was having an issue. Couple of things that leapt out about that visit that I thought would be used to pass along. One is, I don't know how recent this decision is, but I haven't been there for a while, but they no longer will call in prescriptions for people to locations. You have to take your prescription in. Now, if you are the ill person, I, I have a problem with that, I guess. There should be some, I, I understand why they're doing it. There's a certain, they're trying to avoid prescription fraud.
So you can't go take it for your wife or?
No, I can't.
Oh, okay.
But what I'm saying is, is they can't call it in. Someone actually has to physically go and take it in, wait, come back, whatever. It's, I, I think there's got to be a better option than that. I, I get they're trying to cut back on prescription fraud. That seems to be a real, you know, problem if someone doesn't have somebody going for it, that kind, that kind of stuff. The other one is apparently they've taken now to giving you essentially get out of jail free cards. If you want, they will write you a note that you can take to your boss or, or your school and say, I was in the emergency room, that's why I couldn't, that's why I couldn't come to work in school. Because that was, that's, that's fascinating to me. It's like, Rick told me to walk into my wife, who owns your own business, they still run around saying issues. That's, so yeah, I thought that was pretty funny. It's like, wow, it's kind of like, just automatically do that. They, they print out things that you were there and that's why you're too sick to go to work and you're too sick to whatever.
I wouldn't have to have him write, you were half dead, so.
Well, pretty much, you know, that's how my wife.
So what's that cost? About a five hundred dollar visit?
Oh, you know, I'm sure whatever it was, you know, it was insignificant, but that, but, but once again, if you gotta go, you gotta go. And God bless them all. And once, and once again, the service was top notch and I think we don't, we don't recognize that in some ways. We get, we get caught up in our fussing about this or that about the mental situation in Ketchikan. We tend to forget that when you really need top notch service, we get pretty good service for a place that's had thirteen thousand people in it, you know, when you really look at it.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for the participation tonight and I'd like to thank the, the public for coming out and discussing the upcoming project and voicing their concerns. I do have concerns in regards to the overall project and how are we going to work through this, but we all understand that building a highway or repairing a highway takes time, money, and it's going to create some noise and dust. And hopefully we can mitigate it so everybody can, can get through it in a reasonable manner. I don't think that we're going to be able to address all the situations in every case, but I think that we need to do our best to minimize the impact on our community. And yet you have road built, so. Anything else?
Does anyone remember when was the last time they actually did it?
That project?
The whole, I mean, it was like thirty some odd years ago.
No, I don't know.
It's been more recent than that.
Has it? Unfortunately.
I just want to do it this year and that had, we, we need to avoid they were popular. Let's do this and we'll turn up again and then.
It's probably been a dozen years or so. Having no other business, no executive sessions.
He's slipping, he's like a session.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess.
Make one up.